I've never seen anything like that. Grabbed by the next day after church. The sign isn't there, he's in his garage. And he closes garage door, man, close. He's an animal.
Even animal.
He is. He's mentally ill.
All right, let's go ahead and call this city council budget work session to order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Doing a roll call, we have all council members present. Is there any public comment this evening? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to our first business item, F1, the general and EDA funds.
All right, so, let me just start, you know, in case we got anybody watching or listening, whatever. Let's, let's think about this, the second budget meeting that we're doing here is about capital. The most basic level of capital is expenditures over $5,000 that have some regular recurring pattern. Right? That is the most basic differentiation from the operating budget. And this one, we'll, I mean, they're labeled F1, two, three, four, we'll just, that is to understand the sequence, but we'll just start rolling through this. At first, I'll go through the packet, we'll kind of hit the highlights, it won't be super in-depth. Then after that, we'll turn and we'll actually get into the Excel documents where it is considerably more dense. And at any point in time, if any council members have any questions, please let me know. So budget schedule. We do have, we did previously pass by resolution, August 20th, budget session. All I would look for at the end of this is just definitive confirmation, you do or do not want that to occur. And remember, when we get to September 3rd, whatever levy we pick, we cannot go above that. If we're at all unsure, we should artificially inflate it until we can find the number we're certain about and then come down to it. So that's, that's my, my keystone advice on that one, please don't forget that. All right, let's roll into this. So when we talk about general fund and EDA, capital for those items is not in Fund 101 as the operating expenses, capital for, for those two department, the general fund and the EDA is in Fund 920. Fund 920 gets primary funding from, from levy dollars. And for 2025, this is what we have queued up currently. Some of this is, you know, not going to be news. Voting equipment, that's periodically will come up, this is a, that's a joint expenditure with the county and there have been years where I've understood that we would have an expenditure for voting equipment and then the county says, no, we're not doing that. We'll, we'll talk about it next year. So we'll put it in with that anticipation, but it won't be at staff's direction. It'll be when the county tells us, we owe them money for our share of voting equipment, then we cut them a check. Employee accommodations, that's an annual recurring thing, most years we are not spending that. Well, we spend some of the money, we would, we never actually spend it all, but. AC units. Yeah, we're, we're at 20 years, some of those are not looking awesome. The other impetus for this is our HVAC guy, Brian, has let us know that there are some rules changing around Freon and that if we wait a year or two, that price will go from, say, forty-three thousand to, say, fifty-seven, sixty-three. So I think if we've got 20 years in, we've already got some planned work to be able to figure out why the air exchanger doesn't work here in the first place. Couple this stuff together, get the cheaper price to, in 2025 rather than waiting till 2026 or '07. Police, a fair list on police, we've got to get their, the generator that they have over there, we got to get a pad and actually get the transfer switch installed. Get that thing actually going now that they're fully in and, and using that facility and its capacity. Squad vehicle, remember that eighty-four thousand, not just the vehicle, that is the full outfit. That is the graphics, the lights, the safety equipment, the printer for the computer, the computer, right? I mean, the radar, all of it. So that is everything. Also at the PD building, if you haven't noticed, and you probably did the other night, if you're out there, that blue stripe at the top of the building is not looking the hottest. Travis had asked about getting that painted, I said, sure, we can do that, especially since we've got a boom lift, that's fantastic. But then I also insisted that we should block seal at the same time. My conversations with Brad when we bought it were that he had block sealed, but I suspect it was probably about 2018. General rule of thumb would, you would block seal every seventh year, so. We got to replace some doors, the entrance doors there, in that, in that description, is actually just getting through and getting the front door ADA accessible, getting an actuator on there, making that power. I think we, last time we did that, I think we spent six thousand and sixty dollars. So I'm betting on inflation of a couple of years, we'll, but we should be able to stay under that amount.
You're saying just the front door in the, to the end, to the entry, the last door?
Yeah, other, yes, just that one, other doors are in a future year.
I was gonna say, yeah, because that.
We've got some other service doors.
The metal front door could use, we could use a new door, too.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll price it out, we'll, we'll see what we can do, but I'm hoping that for a single aluminum door, I'm not going to have to spend an arm and a leg. The real crux of the price is actually running the power and get the actuators in, so.
I guess we could maybe just paint it, I guess, but.
Well, but we still need to, I think it's wise we get ADA accessible.
Well, no, I'm not talking about that door, I'm just talking about the, the metal, the steel door, yeah.
Yeah, and the, the other three steel doors on the north, south, and west side are in varying conditions.
Yeah.
Strangely enough, in my estimate, it seemed like the west door is actually in better condition than the other two. You would expect south and west to be the worst, but nonetheless, those are future years, that's, that's in the schedule. Overhead door pressure plates. I think, do any of them work? I understand, I don't think, yeah, I was gonna say, my understanding, I talked to the tenant, was none of them work. So we should probably have some kind of safety mechanism on that. Those are very large doors, and they are not light. Flooring, when we got into the PD building, we did have most of the flooring done. We had some of it was done by the prior owner as part of the purchase agreement, and we've got some done to get them in. But at this point, my recommendation is, I don't think we need ten thousand entirely, but let's get this thing done all of, you know, it's tight cluster and then queue up flooring for another thirty years down the road and be done.
When you're saying flooring, where do you mean, like garage, garage floor, like?
It would be, when you went to the office, the main, the main floor?
Yep.
We replaced the front lobby with laminate and then into the records office and then five feet down that hallway and stopped. So it'd be everything that wasn't put in on that new build.
Yeah, and it got a little heavier use than, it doesn't look as good as what we have here, even though this flooring in City Hall has been there longer.
Isn't it carpeted in the?
It is carpeted and it's, I think, part of the problem is running a trucking company out of there. Kind of got a lot of dirt and grease and it's not, it's not the best, but.
So you're looking to pull the carpet out and put laminate down?
Yes, then that way, in that, in that eastern end, top floor and bottom floor, all the flooring has been done reasonably close together. So now we can just start queuing up every thirtieth year. Knock it out. And of course, we've got the recurring LATG maintenance of the county. We've got some additional building, building cameras, previously we had put in the, kind of the minimum, based on the budget that Travis had to work with. This would be able to give us a, a few more cameras on that building. Then we get into some street stuff, we've got a 2004 Chevy queued up. We've got some attachments for skid steers, right, V pools, brooms, snow blower, those types of things. Standard, oops.
Have you talked to Matt on those to see if, if he wants to replace those?
He, he, he thinks that they need to be, but that, he, he knows full well how I feel about all this. Is that you do it if you need to, and if you don't, you push it back and you do not worry about it, it will be there. Which has been the, the insight that I gained a number of years ago from Granite is every department head is willing to wait so long as the money will actually be there when it actually needs to be done. So I don't have concerns about that. If Matt thinks he can get another year or two out of it, I know he will. Then the last one, we've got sign replacement, that's kind of a, there's a repeating pattern to that. And then street lighting, we have the street light pole replacement, right? So this is stuff that's in the ground already, but needs to be replaced. It's, it's useful life, there is a schedule for that that you guys have, have seen and adopted previously. Same with the lighting infill, right, there's a schedule for this, we've identified the priority spots. But the infill is, I'm using thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars to add lights that are not currently in city, in city limits. Then we get to ICC. I've been told they have rose colored glasses on this item, but I think it can be done. ICC, we've got replace exterior siding, exterior doors and windows. I added this largely because we found out we do actually have a leak around the windows, especially on this west side. And obviously the siding is, while we get comments, how about that? So. But it is a, a well-used facility, so. Then we've got PRC, got Academy Park Tennis Court resurfacing. We've got some money for Bluebird Park, of course, it's kind of in discussion, so we'll see how those discussions pan out on what to do with Bluebird Park and the skate equipment and things. So we might see those numbers come in or out, or go up or down, or, but we'll, we'll see how those discussions go. Matson Park Tennis Court, the reconstruction.
Why is that reconstruction not just a resurface?
Based on the age.
It was resurfaced it a couple of years ago and it's already in rough shape, isn't it?
Yeah, so this is, this is the problem is, is that, I mean, it's just like a road. Once you get, once it is, once it is degraded all the way through, there's not a lot, because, I mean, water is the worst enemy of anything, right? And once water starts getting under that subsurface, eventually you just have to pull it up, redo that subsurface. Now make it a fully impervious surface again, so. Can it still be used in its current condition? Yeah, and that'd be up to the council, if, if you think residents are on board with leaving it, great. If you think residents want to see it redone.
I, I guess I just used it twice last week and I think it's fine, myself, but, I mean, depends what sort of, how perfect we want it to be.
Yeah, I mean, and that, that is exactly it, it's how good a condition, what is, you know, deemed good condition, that's not a, that's certainly not a me decision, that's definitely a council decision, especially on that kind of an item. Then the Cambridge, I see any bike walk trail contribution. That is an annual amount that, that we've already agreed to. So, street construction, I missed an N in there. Street construction fund, four twenty-five and pavement management fund, four forty. I've been presenting these together now for a couple of years because in the future, those two funds will combine. Truth be told, four forty will run out of money eventually is the, the issue there. Utility franchise fees won't keep up with, because we keep getting roads. And eventually, the utility franchise fees will not keep up with that, and so we do need to fold those in together. So that's in the works. But right now, we've got queued up, I see any hill street rehabilitation. We've got East Duel from Heritage to the water treatment facility. We've got our, kind of our static dual and heritage intersection on there. I still have five hundred thousand in there, but as we move through the project, we'll find out if that's different, but I think for now, that's a reasonable number to at least start with. And then the 2025 pavement management, remember pavement management, we're talking about crack filling, seal coating, chip sealing, that kind of stuff. And that's in the amount of three eighty-three for, for 2025. Also worth reminding, I got the little note here, right? Four twenty-five street projects paid with taxes and state funding, no debt is planned to be issued through at least 2057. Can never guarantee those things, but I see a clear path to not having to issue debt on any street projects. Remember that if you do not issue debt on a street project, it is buy three, get one free. That is kind of a big deal in the long run. And then, of course, currently the four, Fund 440, the pavement management stuff, seal coating, all that is not paid with tax dollars. Those are utility franchise fees that come, come in. We currently fund about one year ahead of time, so each year, at the end of the year, I have cash roughly to, to cover the next year's project. So we have a little cushion there and a half for some time, but that won't last forever. I expect us to be out by 2036, I would think, about the time it would go negative. Water fund, we've.
Just for the utility franchise fees, I mean.
Yeah, so, since that's the only source of funding, and then those are the only expenditures, is pavement management. My, my guess, Matt, is about 2036, we'll run out of money in that fund, that'd be the time, then move it into four twenty-five. And then it, then it will, then those projects will be utility franchise funded and levy funded. It'll just be a combination. It's not that the utility franchise fees won't continue, but they aren't gonna, I don't think that they'll actually keep up. Then we got the, what's currently scheduled for water fund. You know, a lot of little items, then we got the chlorine generation room mixed oxidant system and the associated salt prime tank.
And we just have a problem with that unit?
That's why it's on here.
Okay.
That tank cannot be saved, and unfortunately, the, we call it, I call it a Myox, but that's actually a brand, it's like Kleenex versus facial tissue. The mixed oxidant system, that is rough, that is about seven years, it is very difficult to get that. You can get eight, if you're super lucky, you get nine, and that's just how that is. And when we did switch to that system, which we did switch in 2018, we did run the math and basically, as long as, as long as what you're paying for salt isn't as volatile as what you are otherwise paying for chlorine, you're good. And my experience in Granite Falls, we did not have that kind of system, and there were some years where chlorine was dang near cheap as water. And then there were other years where it was ten times as expensive as gasoline. And you had no control, and it was really tough. It was really tough.
So I saw.
I would like to add on it, even though Mike does have this included in the 2025 budget here, you are likely going to be seeing that very soon come through.
That was, I saw that email and I was wondering, we get, we get complaints about the water, and we've talked about this before. Does that generation system have any sort of negative side effects on the water versus using real chlorine? Because I'm trying to figure out what the difference is between here and Cambridge and Bram, and everywhere else, their water tastes a little bit better.
The number one decider in how any, any water system's water tastes and/or looks is what it was like when it came out of the ground.
Okay.
I mean, that's really, that is the number one predictor. You can pick whatever kind of system you want, but in the end, if you have great water coming out of the ground, you're going to end up with great water in the end, and if you're, you know, if you're one of these cities pulling some water out of the Mississippi,
It does also have to.
It's never going to be as good.
It does have to do with, as well as your water treatment plant and how that design is. Ours was designed specifically for what the makeup of our raw water is. So we do, we're, we're treating the water for specifics of, as Mike said, how that water is coming out of the ground. Everyone's chemistry is a little bit different, everybody's chemistry is going to react a little bit differently. In terms of the chlorine regeneration system, it actually is really great because we are, because it's mixed oxidant, it's not just chlorine. You almost get a, you get the hyperchlorite, but you have the, like a peroxide product that helps to clean the scum that can build a residue in your water distribution pipes. And that is greatly reduced by having a mixed oxidant system versus just doing like a hypochlorite, liquid chlorine that you're bringing in. So it should be better in terms of it that way.
Would it, is it at all possible if that were to go offline and we could try the regular chlorine type like what other places do?
That is what we're on, that's what we've been using for the last few months right now.
Okay, just to see if anybody has any more or less complaints or if it tastes different or, because that's, that's one thing that I hear is the water tastes different or not totally great. So I wonder, I always wondered if, I saw that chlorine generator when I went and toured, and I wondered if that had anything to do with it, so.
We just use, do you use just raw chlorine?
We do use a hypochlorite right now, that's our backup, it's a liquid chlorine. Ozone, gas?
Chlorine, I don't want, I want chloramine.
Chloramines is what we're trying not to have, but we do get a formation of chloramines.
Some states will also have chlorine boosters depending how far it goes down.
Yep.
They use chloramine because it goes further than chlorine does. Most people don't realize chlorine ruins the water so much.
So when we bring forward our mixed oxidant system that we're unfortunately not going to be able to wait until 2025 to get, to, to purchase, we will have a report that staff has worked on for our breakpoint chlorination, which will help explain what we're having, what we're seeing with the taste and odor, it's more odor, I would think, but in our system, has to do with the raw water, has to do with trying to get that right amount of chlorine. And even though we're treating, maybe, let's just say we are exactly correct, spot on at a water treatment plant, you have lots of pipe that, and we don't put chlorine into our, we don't inject it in our distribution system. So it's got to make it from point A to point B, and if it has a dead end, it's even more difficult. So we will have some more information coming to help share that with the community. All very safe, good water, but you are going to have some odor sometimes, yes.
Okay, I know we'd. Oh, I agree, a hundred percent. Yeah, I just know we had talked about maybe four or five months ago, talking about the water taste, and we haven't yet, so I thought that might be.
It's coming, it's coming, it's been drafted, it's done, we're just trying to bring it as a full package.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm just going to go ahead and throw out, see, go under the bus on this one. My water's terrible, just horrific. Anybody who thinks their water's bad in Iceni, you ain't seen nothing yet, it's terrible. Philip, the tub, and it literally sits brown.
I think since the Myox machine went down, but I am on a dead end too, so that maybe has something to do with it. But I thought since that went down that it, it hasn't, I've noticed it smelling different than normal. I mean, not bad or anything, but just different, but. But, yeah, I think we need to probably get that replaced and get it back up online with, with the Myox machine soon.
Hasn't he had a lot of issues with that Myox machine? I, I thought when I toured it, he said it was really a, sometimes it was a bit of a hassle.
So when it's great, it's great. The problem that we have with it is we don't have anyone remotely close, and I mean, close by being in the Midwest area that can do repairs on it.
That's what it was, yep.
The last time we had to do repairs on the unit, we had to bring someone in, I want to say Texas, but down south somewhere. You're paying airfare, time, lodging to get someone in to, to work on it. That doesn't even, you know, in addition to all the parts, you know, so that is a problem. What we're going to be recommending is a system that is similar in nature of how it creates chlorine, but it is not that company, because it really is important to have resources, at least in the Midwest region. So they may have to drive here, but not fly.
Yeah, that's spot on, I've heard the same grievances of sitting on hold, trying to even get anyone to talk to you about the Myox. So we can, we can move on from Myox and, and move to a new unit. Then we've got some smaller items there, portable parallel analyzer and a pink water alarm. Then of course, the, you know, kind of the elephant in the room, well, number four. Like I said, I think Bolton and Mink thinks it'll be a little bit more. I think I'm, I think I'm going to be really darned close on this, to be honest. I've got a sixth sense about this, right, Jason?
You guys have, you guys have like a side bet going on that, or?
A little bit, I mean, it's not a bet, but I, I will put it in his face if I'm right. And remember here, I'm going to go into a little more detail, and at any point you have questions, let me know. Sewer, we, we don't have a lot, and you're not going to see a lot over the next number of years. We've already gone through and taken out anything that would be a complete waste of time and/or money prior to a mechanical plant in 2040. Talked to Steve a little bit here in between meetings, you know, we are prepared enough that, you know, we are already identifying like what is, what do we think our grant and/or subsidized loan path is going to be? And recognizing that if I want to be on PFA's list of projects and have this thing up in 2040, we'll need to be talking to PFA in 2034. That seems odd maybe that you need that many years out, but even the construction of the plant is going to take a number of years. It's not a, this is not a summer project type, type deal, so. Oh, I should mention, contribution to general fund capital purchases, this, on that one, without even looking at the detail, I'm going to, I'm going to bet that that is the, that one truck. Right? We ask streets, water, sewer, all the different departments to cover a portion of that truck, as we understood it as being used in that, in that rough ratio, so.
Is that the 2004 with the dump bed?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully we don't need to replace that.
Well, that'll be, that'll be one of those ones where Matt and I have discussed this too, is, is there's a new reality that I've never had to deal with before, where if you want a vehicle, you need to order it, like, we queue that up for 2025, there is a really good chance that we do not even see it in 2025. So there is kind of this idea of, if, you know, you, you have to predict the end of the useful life much further in advance on vehicles than we used to. Squad cars are taking forever, plow trucks are unbelievable. I cannot believe that a plow truck is taking three years, I used to be able to order one, we used to be able to put together specs in a bid, or an order in like January, February, and I could pretty well count on a hundred percent of the time having it before the next snow season. Now, if you do that in 2025, you hopefully have it before 2028, if you're doing well. So that, that is a new kind of scenario where we got to start to try to plan and figure out when that useful life will end and make sure that order has been placed one year, two years, three years ahead of time.
So all those, all those specifics on that truck are done by GM, are done by the dealership? It's not a, an outsourced company that adds the dump box and stuff? I mean, couldn't you just get a one ton and add a dump box versus a one and a half ton?
The problem is, is what any manufacturer is allocating towards state bid items.
Ah, state bid.
Right, it, it's, it's to get your state bid price. If we just say, well, we don't care about state bid price, I went and talked to Boyer Chev and Ryan Chev and just, the council's like, nuts to state bid, and we got three quotes, we're good. We'll pay a bunch more, we'll get it sooner, we're going to pay a bunch more. My general preference is knowing how much cheaper state bid vehicles are versus off the lot. I would always rather bide my time, even if it takes a year or two to get that state bid price. All right, stormwater, yeah, similar deal, right? We don't have a lot of activity in stormwater, once we got our, our infrastructure into place, the primary is annual maintenance. This is an inflation adjusted ten thousand from 2020, 2020 or 2021. So we just keep adding that, that three percent. Same stormwater has to contribute to items that they're using, like trucks. Liquor fund, we've got a fair amount of computer equipment that we're going to try to get, get replaced over there. And the big one would be the, the automatic door for the beer cave. We've touched on that briefly.
Do we have to have an automatic door?
For the beer cave?
Yeah.
For the customers, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd be, yeah. In the back for a staff coming through? No, that's just, that's just a regular old door. But anybody who's kind of coming in or out with two cases or grab a cart, like, yeah, I want them to have a phenomenal experience. And it's the same thing you're going to see in 2026, I'm going to insist to Keith that he replaces shopping carts. Unless they are otherwise mint, I want them replaced, because there is a, there is a real difference in my eyes on how you feel about a store, when you walk in, you grab that cart and that thing is like silk versus you walk into Walmart and the thing is bobbing and weaving all over the place. I want, I, and I'm serious, I want, I want every customer.
I'm not going to argue that at all.
I want every customer walks in a store to think everything is just as good as it could possibly be every time. And I do not want their experience ruined because I didn't want to spend a couple of grand on carts. That's not the thing. If we can make seven hundred and fifty thousand a year at that store, I'm not, yeah, so that'll be up.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do those carts ever get left out in the parking lot? Because Aldi figured that, that frickin' thing out.
Right.
What people will do for a quarter.
No, to be honest, I don't know that they do real often.
I didn't even know we had carts.
Often, the most common scenario with the carts is it's somebody who's elderly or has some issue walking or something, they're going to take the cart, they're not going to handle it. And because we, because Keith insists on great customer service, there's almost only somebody walking them out anyway, right? I'm going to help you load this in, and I'm going to take this cart back. So most of the time, it's, they're not getting left outside anyway, because we're just going to provide great service, so.
I gotta believe a cart would last longer than that, though.
Well, that, but that's the threshold that I'm giving him.
Okay.
If they're bobbing and weaving, get them out of there.
Okay.
Like, great experience every time, period. I like my store. Technology fund, capital budget, so this is six fourteen. How this basically works is you queue up all the technology. How this basically works is you queue up all the technology stuff in, you know, tablets, printers, computers, all that stuff in 614. To the extent that it's enterprise fund, I'm either going to have them actually cover it directly or transfer money into 614 to cover their share. So this is where you're going to see a list here. The miscellaneous software programs, that's more of a preemptive thing. Every now and then you're going to have, I didn't know I was going to need this particular software at the beginning of the year, but I need to be able to do what I need to do when I need to do it. So most years we're not even spending that much, well, actually most years we're not even spending that money, but. Miscellaneous computer displays and components, yes, that happens. Monitors go down, I need new cords, I need new adapters. I gotta have a, same with desktop printers. This is an amount that's come down a lot over the years as we've moved to the Epson inkjet. Saves a phenomenal amount of money, being able to buy those bottles for nine or 11 dollars instead of 60 bucks for the drum. Yeah, then we've got a few different items here. Most of it's liquor store. Oh, this is also worth noting. Did make a modification to 614 plan going forward. Previously, computing devices had been to assumed, excluding the server, other computing devices have been assumed to have a five-year useful life. When I got here in 2017, the computer equipments were, computer equipment, period. All of it was not in good shape. It took a long time to even open an Excel document. I would have to sit for 20 to 40 seconds just to get it to open. But I also could not actually do anything else without having the program freeze up and having to start over. Now that we've gotten through a rotation and we've gotten everybody through on a fifth year and we've actually been buying things at a minimum, at minimum standards, like solid-state drives. Back in 2018, it would have been eight gig hard drive, now we're talking 16 as a minimum, preferred 32. Three-year warranty on site, doing those types of things. I think we can start giving ourselves a little grace here and instead of do six-year rotation. So I've reorganized that, so that's worth noting. But like I said, the, the network devices, network switch, server, those things, still seven. Think that's still appropriate. Yeah, all right, we're going to fill the screen. On this, I'll, I'll run through, I'll hit the highlights, but again, stop me at any time if there's anything in particular that you really want to or need to see. So I'm going to stick mostly to the left side here, even though of course this does run out, you know, to 2050, whatever. I'm going to try to skip through and talk about things that have changed or decisions that I've made, that kind of thing. We talked about the AC units, right? We know that it's going to be, you know, 15, 10 to 20,000 dollars more in just a couple of years, so let's not artificially inflate our own price. We do have EOC equipment, that is not a new, but that is a kind of a reminder. We don't really know how that's going to work out, that's going to have to depend on other organizations and/or grant funding. Travis will pursue. Here, we've got to replace the doors, but we've also got the other doors in here. Let's see, what's my other good one? Dump box, this would be, this is one to keep an eye on, where is it? There's my loader. No, it disappeared. Well, nonetheless, there it is. This would be one to keep an eye on, and you can't quite see it because of the page there. That's 353. I don't know that we're going to get new on that, but we're going to get what we can for 353, so. The other thing that we've added here is.
What are you on there, Mike?
What's that?
What are you on there?
This is in the future. I'm just trying to identify, just bring to your attention, large expenditures shortly in the future. Because it does have those, large expenditures in the not-too-distant future have a disproportionate impact on what your levy is now.
Yeah.
Right? So just trying to draw your attention to that. Other item here is I realized that we had once upon a time abandoned the Skidsteer buyback program. It had been a rotating, I think it was every two years, send, send, you know, a pre-agreement, right? We're going to send it back, you're going to give us top dollar, we'll get new ones, we'll cut you a check for 14 grand or whatever it was, and keep running those out. We abandoned that and I realized I didn't have new skidsteers on here. They need to be. They're currently, they're both 2019. I talked to, to Public Works foreman and mechanic. They are not as optimistic as me about making it to 2026, but assured me they would do their best, so. Yeah, problem is there is a hydraulic pump goes out, you, you're out a few grand right out of the chute, no matter what, so. But we'll queue, we'll queue those up on a seven-year life and like I always tell Matt, if there's the one thing you do learn from, from this kind of a plan, you will learn what the actual useful life of an item is, one way or another, so. Best to try to be reasonable and honest about it. Let's see, what else did I have?
Do you know roughly how many hours are on them skiddies? Any, any idea?
I don't know, I'd have to add, I don't have Matt or anybody. I do know they get used a lot.
In the winter, yeah.
Yeah, my biggest concern, my biggest concern, I was thinking about, I was thinking about this earlier. My biggest concern would be is we get to 2026, we order them up. And, you know, in that winter of 2025 to 2026, boy, if one of those went down. For the amount of hours we put on those and during a snowstorm, that'd be tough to, to fill in. I mean, we'd make it work, but it would take a lot longer and there would be some people that would not be real thrilled about it, I'm sure, but.
The boom lift, Mike, so I mean, that was something that we bought because we kind of had a deal on it. I mean, is that something that we, we want to actually put on there as a replacement item that we think is valuable enough that we need to plan for that, or is that?
Well, it would certainly be valuable enough. And so what I've done is simply used the used price and then just inflation adjusted. So the intent and declared, literally written and used, is that we are not trying to buy a new one. Those new are exceptional amounts of money. I think that for what we need it for, for what we're using it for, I think used works fine. Will inflation adjust? And when we get to, you know, 2030, 2039, you know, we'll have our 38, 39 grand and we're going to get what we can get for it, and that'll be that.
I asked the Public Works guy about that yesterday and he said they already use it more than they expected. So I, and I, I know a lot of cities have them, even cities much smaller than us have them and use, use the heck out of them, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that was pretty good for the amount of.
That was a great buy.
Yeah, for the amount of stuff that, and I think it's one of those things too, is if you're Public Works and you haven't had it, it's hard to think about all the ways you would use it until you have it and suddenly you're like, oh my, how would, how did we do this before? You know?
10 years from now, you're still going to get almost the same money we paid for that machine too. They don't really go down past that, that bottom price.
Well, and I'm, I'm putting, I'm putting 15 years on it.
Okay.
So, I mean, whether that's reasonable or not. My general thought on these, when I assign a useful life on these, until I have information to indicate otherwise, my general thought is that if I have a full-time mechanic, I ought to be able to do the maintenance to make it go a little bit longer than, you know, an ordinary person would otherwise understand. Now, sometimes you end up using it way more than you thought you would too, and that pulls it back the other way, but we'll start with 15 years. What else do we have?
Can we go back one, one page, Mike, a little bit?
Yeah.
I was looking at the, on the PD budget, so we've got car and body cameras, 10-year useful life, but we just, we just bought body cameras, right? So we have this queued up for 2029. Is that useful life, I mean?
Didn't we just authorize use of the public safety dollars for that, is what, right?
They were delivered, so.
Okay.
Yes.
So we should, yes, I should update that.
Okay.
That would be, that would be accurate. By the time I was originally drafting this, council hadn't even taken that action yet.
Okay, gotcha.
So that'll be pushed to 2034.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, the year it starts in service in, yep. And then I will, then I will reassess the, the value and the inflation adjustment based on what we actually paid and then what I think we will be at for staffing levels. I'm going to bet 10 years out, I'm going to bet on at least one more officer, so we'll, we'll adjust on that.
Well, and the useful life probably, we thought was 10 years and it ended up being, well, we had half of them, half of them working after six years still, so.
Travis and I will talk about it. He's also a lot more, he knows a lot more from his vendors about what the options are. There's a lot of, do you buy it or do you do the subscription? And unfortunately, it's a, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. I don't, there's not a perfect answer on those, at least not one that I'm satisfied with, but. Anything else on?
No, that, that's what I, when you were talking about that and I was lost where, where you were at, that's what I was looking at, so.
Yeah, so I'm just going through and I, yeah, please stop me if I'm going too fast. I know the sequence and order.
Oh, you're fine. I, I just wanted to ask him about that before I forgot.
You know, I can, I kind of know what I'm looking for and, so yeah, the skidsteers and boom lift. What else have we changed that we need to think about? Yeah, this, so the net for siding doors and windows, I got about just under 66,000 for the ICC. I think it can be done. I think the big difference there is, is whether you're putting vinyl siding on or you're putting steel or hardy board siding. I think, I think we're okay with vinyl, but if council feels otherwise, we can tweak things, but that's, that's how I view it. Yeah, then we've got some placeholder items in there, there have been some time. Dynamic sign, you know, it's, right now it's a placeholder, but of course, until we actually have land, I don't know that we need to spend a ton of time figuring out what we're going to do with it until, until we can actually count that chicken. See, still on here. Still on here, I do have placeholder for restrooms and splash pad. There's just nothing, I mean, there's just no data, but it's, it's listed because it was a thing that we had endeavored upon and theoretically a future council might again someday endeavor upon that. I don't see that being in the near future, but. Let's see, then we'll get, we talked about the tennis court servicing. Yeah, and right now, this is, this is at 390. There are some years here where we get out here ways, we get a little low. And I'm leaving it at 390, even though if you were looking at the 20 years that are presented, you would think, well, why on earth does this need to be 390? We're basically at a million plus all the time, we're, we're crushing it. Except shortly after the 20 years presented, we turn negative and we kind of just keep going negative for a while. So we do need to keep an eye on that. I don't know that it requires like critical adjustment now, right? But this is the point of being able to see this stuff more than 20 years in advance, is that when you do want to tweak that levy, you can do small changes over a period of time and really fine tune it, rather than just saying, oh, well, this thing needs to go up 200 grand this year. No, let's, let's tweak by 10 grand, let's tweak by five grand, let's tweak by 15 grand over time, up and down as needed. We'll keep an eye on those balances in the, in the future.
Now, there isn't anything in here for Whisper Ridge, but I've received a lot of feedback about it. I'm sure we're going to talk about it, but would it make sense if we're having one or two other tennis courts redone? Would it, would you get economies of scale by potential looking at resurfaced options for that?
Yeah, you'd, I mean, you'd save some amount of money. I think for projects that size, your mobilization cost is, you know, probably more than like the 2,500 dollar range. I mean, on big street projects, you can be talking, you know, 25,000 plus for mobilization, depending on the equipment. So, yeah, you'd save some.
Okay.
But it's not, you know, it's not enormous. All right, anything else on 920? This is the one where we definitely have a little bit of discussion, 425. We've got our street projects listed out, we've got Asante Hills, we've got East Duel from Heritage Water Treatment, we've got the, the intersection that we're working with the county on. But I know that there was an intent to have some discussion about Tyler Street and Fourth Avenue. Now, previously how this had been presented originally last year was, I think we had this out in like the 2037, 2040 range. It had been out there a ways. We talked about it and thought, well, let's queue up cash now. And until those residents initiate that project, we just keep sliding it out one more year. That way, when those residents do show up, because someday, I don't know if it would be five years or 50, someday those residents are going to say, I want my services. And I would prefer that we are just, we're just, we're prepared and, and have been for a long time. But at the same time, I don't know that, I don't know that I would recommend, nor I don't know that there would be an appetite to force a project upon them. So this is where it doesn't get a timeline. It's queued up in 2027 and 2028 only because that's where it would fit neatly without destroying the, the cash balance of the fund. But otherwise, I would just leave it as resident initiated. When those residents come and petition the council for the project, we're already ready. But otherwise, the anticipation would be as, as we get to 2027, 2028, we just keep sliding them back, sliding them back, sliding back, so that anytime they do come, they're never waiting more than 12 months to have that project completed.
George, what's the appetite on that? I know I talked to one person back there and she said she does not want the city to do anything with any of it.
There's not one person I've talked to, not one.
Just making sure.
Yeah, none of them at this point.
Yeah, and so then my concern on that is owners will change and sometimes people's minds will change. Especially in my experience, I can very much understand why they would not want anything done. But sometimes your mind changes if you're well-inseptic, go out at the same time and someone hands you a quote of 30,000. Sometimes you suddenly have a different opinion about, about things. Money has a way of doing that. So I don't know if the council feels the same as.
Assessment's cheaper than the repairs, then people are going to be asking for it, right?
Well, you.
I don't.
Yeah, that's true, versus 10 years, 10 years of paying an assessment, yeah.
Assessment's never going to be cheaper.
Well, and on, and on those ones, you'd be.
Some of them I think might be. Depending on, depending on how far they had to run sewer and water.
Well, so remember a couple of things, is first of all, on those ones, we'd be adding city services, like water and sewer. And for their, the, the term of the assessment is one-half of the stated useful life. So on those ones, they don't get 10 years, they get 15, right? And then council would set, we have a standard for setting an interest rate, but. See, the other thing is on the assessments, by statute, the assessment amount cannot be greater than the benefit to the parcel.
Right.
So, you know, you can't just assess them 100,000 if the actual benefit to the parcel is 30.
That, that is one of the main reasons I brought up this discussion earlier because the city is going to end up having to pay a lot more than they think if they go down those roads and.
Yeah.
Do all the infrastructure that is required to get them all hooked up. Every one of them should have an argument that the cost, the assessment is, doesn't raise the value of their property of the price of the assessment, which it has to do, or there's a formula in there. And then the assessment will be much more than rise of the value of their property.
You can't approve an assessment.
I can't at the moment, but that's my guess.
No, I'm saying a future council, when that project comes and it's time to do the assessment hearings, I mean, I'm not, I'm certainly not coming to you and saying each of these homes now has a $100,000 assessment because there is no justification for that.
Right.
Any, any resident that would contest that court would win that in no time. That wouldn't, that's not hard. So, yeah, those, and if that means the city is eating a huge amount, huge chunk of the cost, yeah, that's how that works. That ship has sailed, they have been annexed in, that's, that's now the lot the city's in. That's how that works.
Well, that's one of the main things I was trying to prepare the city for. That's another reason why I asked them to take a look at it, because costs have gone up so much before they did the last, okay.
Yeah, and I get, when was the last, did we, we just revised these a month ago? Something like that? We did, those estimates for the cost of the project.
Sure.
We just revised those, just like in the last month, Jason and I.
Can I take a look at them? Can you send me a copy of that? Can you send me a copy of that?
Well, it's, no, well, I don't know if he's got anything more. All I got from him, I said, Jason, I need a new number for.
A rough number.
Yeah, and he just emails me back, you know, here's one-point-five-three for this project and one-point-six-nine for this project.
Got it.
And he's just taking bid amounts, recent bid amounts against linear feet to, that's it.
Well, do a simple math, yeah, that's pretty close to a hundred grand.
Well.
There's not a lot of houses on either one of them roads.
Yeah, I know, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, so you would assess, your standard, standard would be is, is it, for the current assessment policy, right? We maintain an assessment policy and we still do assessments even though we are not bonding. Usually, you are bonding and you are bound to assess at least twenty percent of the project in order to bond, right? They're gonna say, I'm not gonna borrow your money for a street project unless I know twenty percent of the cost is being paid by those benefited parcels. So that's why we continue to maintain that policy so that we preserve that option in the future, right? Because the two most angry people in the world are either the last person to pay a special assessment or the first one to pay a special assessment. Those are the two most angry people on the planet. So maintain that consistency on the assessments, but until that project goes in, there's still the calculation of, here's the linear feet, here's the amount, and we have to be above this threshold to be consistent with the past and preserve our future opportunity to issue debt, should we need, but hopefully we don't. But they're, I mean, they're just not gonna get hundred thousand dollar assessments. It's just not.
Right.
That can't.
I agree.
Yeah. I, I can't.
That was my argument.
Yeah.
When that whole thing went down, the assessments were gonna be outrageous. It wasn't even worth it.
You know, and I maybe need to revise mine. So these ones, I'm basically assuming on these ones, cause I always want to round low, I'm assuming that assessment's actually only gonna be fifteen percent of the project, which is lower than what it needs to be, but I wanna be a little bit conservative no matter what. So, but we'll work that out when the project actually comes. Until then, but as far as I'm concerned, unless council wants to direct otherwise, I queue it up. We move it back each year, leave it as resident initiated, not giving it a specific year. And if they show up and they want it, we're ready. And if they don't, then we can leave them, leave them, leave them be. Yeah, okay. So that's kind of the big one on, on that. Also going forward, I will mention this, I'm probably gonna, I've been thinking about it for a while. I'm probably gonna modify how the special assessments are represented on here, because I recognize that for me it makes sense, but probably to any consumer of this document, it does not. So I think in the future, I'm gonna start lineiting out the associated project and then run it over the collection period, right? So I might have Main Street assessments, ten years, collection date starting here, one-tenth, one-tenth, one-tenth. But then it will actually say that on the left margin, that this is a special assessment collected on Main Street project. And then we would just line those out, just to make it a, hopefully a little clearer and a little easier to consume for any random resident.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, otherwise over here is where we fold in Fund four forty. Fund four forty, yeah, we, we start going negative in the not-too-distant future, I would think. Large part of that is on the twenty-twenty-eight project, we get, we go through the first course of pavement management, seal coating on legacy pines. That's a fair amount of road to be added. And it is what it is. We'll get it done and we'll take care of the roads either way. But then when we need to fold that into Fund four twenty-five to keep it going, that's what we'll do. Boy, yeah, we've talked about, talked about water a lot. I don't know if, I don't know if we wanna add anymore. Talked about two, three, two or three budget meetings or two, three meetings in a row. So if you think of something you wanna come back to, please let me know. Otherwise, yeah, for sewer, again, a lot of these items have just been removed entirely. Some of them are still in here as placeholders, but that's not actually dollar amounts, because they're not applicable, given the future treatment plant. And we will, let's bring that over. That's in twenty forty, just remember the project is still estimated at somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-three million. And we're hoping for seven million grants, eight million in debt, and de facto then eight million in cash. If we find, if we find ourselves unable to acquire any grant funding or super-low-interest loans that may be like USDA, have a loan program, if you meet certain thresholds, instead of twenty-year debt like you would get in the private market, they'll give you loans up to forty years. That can be super helpful. If they're gonna go under the, the prevailing interest rate and extend your terms, that can be really helpful. So.
I have a question here. I see on well number four, or number five, six, and seven, there's nothing there. I know we had talked about in the previous meeting about expanding on a well one. When is the end, end of useful life for well one currently? And would that be something that we should budget for, just trying to up that size then, instead of well five?
It's possible, but I'm gonna need direction from engineering on that.
Okay.
Right now, what I do is re-up the current status, right?
Yep.
Let's, we're gonna pull the sand out, we're gonna drop new pumps in, we're gonna put in new casing, you know, heating, air conditioning. You know, we actually last time we did the door on the wellhouse too. I, I'll take care of those things, but, you know, I need Brian Golden or Jason to say, yeah, this is a thing that can happen with well one, right? We can make this bigger or it's done and it's time to move on. Remember too, is, is Fund six oh one, BCS, that's the best-case scenario. Remember we talked about worst-case scenario, you, there is no point in talking about that one. That, that's utter failure. That can't happen. And so in this one, we have an opportunity to make this work, but we need people to use less and we need the rates to go up. We haven't raised rates in four years, but they're gonna, they are gonna have to go up. And remember too, is in that rate study, if, if you've forgotten, my advice on that is you should look at the rate study as the minimum, like the minimum, minimum, and if we deviate, it needs to be upward. And for the benefit of future residents to ensure some consistency in those rates, rather than, well, we went up but not enough, now we have to go up even more than we would have otherwise, so.
Jason, can you tell me the end of useful life for well one expected? I'm sure, you talked about it earlier, so I figured you guys have some idea.
Yeah, I guess I, I can't recall the year on it, but I guess to answer the well five topic, the, the driver of five is gonna be the need for more volume once we're so big. And we're not gonna be allowed to get more volume out of one. It'd just be whether, when it's time to wait till the end of useful life of one, whether the rehab would try and make it add more rate. But, but the, the well five thing wouldn't be able to get replaced with the, with enlarging well one. Well five's gonna be only needed when we need that added volume and that's likely gonna be that whole other aquifer on the east side of sixty-five and that whole chain of events. So we can't replace that, and so the.
Or push it back.
Well, hopefully we're pushing it back.
Right, right.
Absolutely, but the well one replacement is gonna just be, when it's time, we'll just see how much we can, you know, in, increase its rate functionality, but it's not really gonna be to avoid doing well five.
Just push it back.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you were to guess, would it be five years, ten years, fifty years? Do you have any rough idea?
I, I, yeah, I guess, I assume it's almost in here, is it not Mike, where well?
Well five?
No, where the existing wells' useful lives are.
No, I don't, like I said, I, I, somebody else needs to tell me when a, when a well is done.
That's why I asked.
As far as I'm concerned, I could pull sand out, I could put casing, I could put pumps, and I can keep queuing that up. And I have a schedule for that, but some, an engineer's gonna have to tell me, well, we're a drilling company. You have to tell me, nope, we're done. There's no more, no more casings, no more pumps, it's over.
But yeah, I guess, I'm just going by, you know, even on yours, wellhouse number, or number one, well pump number one, thirty-year life, so twenty-fifty-three, you know, in, in your other elements that go with it. That's, that's just that, that clump of things is gonna be the thing when it's, when it's time to decide to try and re, rehab the whole thing. But again, that would only be for increased rate, not our increased volume we'll want from growth of the city or hopefully, you know, the delayed need for it. But, but the goal is to get all the way through that useful life of well number one.
Before you even touch it. Yeah, it makes, it makes more sense that way.
And, and remember too, is, is, remember this is the best-case scenario. So this is, we've, this is already listing these items as pushed out. And if, and if we fail in our endeavor to get people to use less per capita and we don't generate enough revenue with rate increases, those will move closer in time.
Yeah, I noticed there's no well listed on here until well passed.
We got well four, yep, and this is, yep, and so this is.
Optimistic, maybe?
It's possible. I mean, I'm talking with Brian, he's like, this is possible, but it really, it comes down to, do we, do we move away from ninety-five gallons per capita per day? Or, you know, do we stay there? Or do we move back closer to that seventy, seventy-five range where we had been for a long time? It's, you know, it's gonna matter what residents choose and, and the, and the path that council chooses. But again, if, if we deviate from this, it's, it's, it's going to be worse. There's not a, if we do well with conservation, these get pushed out. This is with people using less. I mean, there's a, these water rates, I mean, I know people don't want water rates to ever go up, but if I can't impress upon you enough, or if I haven't yet, it's a big deal. Like, it's a really big deal that we get this right, that people use less and we get these rates right. And we get, they do need to go up and they, we do need to collect more money.
I think that tiered system that we've talked about is gonna be.
That is my favorite, to let market forces work on that and let people self-correct after they get their giant bill for going over fifty thousand.
I, I guess I would like to.
They're not gonna be happy, but.
I would like to see this with, if you were to just put another well in in twenty forty-four and see what it does to the cost of a well, see what it does to our, I mean, twenty forty-four is twenty years from now for a well, costs three million by then or four million. You're talking, how much would you have to put away a year, a hundred and fifty thousand roughly?
Yep. So remember, in this plan, we're already short cash. That's why we're issuing debt in twenty, what is it, twenty thirty-four for another tower. And then we also issue five and a half million of debt again in twenty forty-two, not just because of, of that. That's up here. I'm gonna bet that's filter under drains. Without actually looking, oh, the tanks. Yeah, the tanks that actually hold water, you do gotta replace those too, so. Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully the efforts that Jim and Adrian are putting forth are gonna be fruitful. I mean, Adrian's doing a great job calling the residents. I don't want the residents to think like, by and large, most people are doing fine. But boy, we have some non-residential accounts that blow through amazing amounts of water. And so far, Jim has been really influential in pointing out to them like, hey, you know your water bill could be a quarter of the size it is right now. They're like, oh, gosh, I would love it if it wasn't twelve hundred or two thousand dollars a month. Great answer, great. I mean, that's a good strategy. I mean, just let people choose, but that fourth, that fourth tier, just letting people recognize their own error.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna use much, then. You'll charge you enough to cover the extra usage that they're using, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and, and we'll need to think.
What I like most about it is that it doesn't hit the people that are just using a normal amount of water, you know, super hard.
And we will need to think about that more, about these rates and whether or not that base should be, you know, three dollar instead of two dollar, or whether or not that fourth tier should be really repressive.
I still think third and four should be higher.
Yep. If we, just FYI, that, what are that fourth tier, we were at? Six D, somewhere in that sixty-five, point six-five cents per gallon, compared to the low tier of like point three-one cents per gallon. If we got to point nine cents per gallon, that would absolutely be one of the highest rates in the state, for sure. Just for perspective, not that that's good or bad, but just for perspective, that.
It would make people stop wasting water.
We did that granite, yes. We, they moved the rate in granite, this was before I started there, but they moved the rate for all water to nine tenths of a penny per gallon. Yeah, that changed behavior real quick, really quick. So. Yeah, six oh two, basically we're doing the minimum until we can get to the mechanical plant. So there's not a, a lot of big expenditures there. Same with stormwater, right? The big heavy lifting is done. At this point now, it's, it's some of the, you know, brush cutting equipment or the sweeper that is kind of the big stuff. And then that annual inflation-adjusted ten thousand dollars, we just keep upping that. Make sure the public works, has, has the funds, either hire a crew or get somebody out there, whatever the status is. Stormwater still does contribute on some engineered projects, to the extent that there is stormwater there. Stormwater is a utility, it owns its own infrastructure and it needs to pay for its own infrastructure. We get to liquor. Not a lot here, although this did get brought up and I'm a huge fan of this, there is the, the prospect of a store expansion. I thought, we didn't rebuild the store, I thought maybe we made it too big until we put stuff in it and then I realized we made it too small. I wished it was bigger, but.
Same thing happens when you build a garage too.
Yeah, first time I walked in there and it was empty, I thought, oh my God, I've made a terrible mistake. But then once it was full, I thought, wow, God, I've made a terrible mistake and it was the other way, so.
Built up.
So, yeah, I want it bigger, but.
Escal, we need an escalator in that joint, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then six fourteen, this is just revamped. Anybody, any council members that wanna see this entire workbook and all these funds, all these do have different detail tabs. You know, very specific stuff, some of it's older, some of it's newer. This one was just redone, but you can see what inventory we actually have and the specs on those devices and things, but. That was the other thing, actually, I should have done that. When I did go through and do the, the revamp on the computing devices, I did just start again and didn't worry about what the cycle had been. And it was just, if you have a older, less capable device, you move to the top of the list. If you had a newer, more capable device, you went to the bottom of the list. Just, we're, let, let the cards fall. No, it can't, it can't be. Buffalo does not have a se, Buffalo has two liquor stores that are both municipal owned and they do not have another. And they're fourteen, and they're, they've been fourteen thousand for quite a number of years.
Over ten.
Yeah, Elk River has, Elk River has two liquor stores, Northbound and Westside. But they do not have a competing one, but Otsego, just across the river, they do not have a municipal and they have a smorgasbord of public liquor stores. I have to look, it might be that you, might be that you have to issue a second one, but nothing prevents you from issuing it to yourself. You have to, you have to look into that. We'll have to look into it.
But I might, I might.
No. Well, we, we'll look into that, but I would say is, right now, either way. Same course of action is what we wanna do. And even if we did have to issue a second license to a non-municipal and we suddenly had to direct competition, but I wanna preserve my profits, I wanna continue to lower tax rates, having a bigger and better store is still the correct answer. I'll compete, I just, just crush them into the ground. If you have better prices and you have more selection, they're not gonna go to the other store anyway, so.
What if, what if we, you know, there's that lot that's for sale next door to the liquor store? What if, if we had to issue two licenses to two separate buildings? What if we were to utilize that lot to build like a, a wine store and then the other one's the liquor store? And then we can issue our two licenses that way and utilize the same parking lot, so not sell the lot we have now?
I think I'd rather eat that lot up for my current store, make that bigger, and then find another spot on the other side of sixty-five. I think that, I mean, northbound traffic is what I really want, but if I'm going to have a second oper, a second store, I don't think I'm getting any additional utility by having a second store on the northbound sixty-five again. I think I gain at least some marginal advantage by being west side of sixty-five to hit southbound traffic. Would never be as good as the northbound side, but.
I'm just thinking it'd be a lot less cost and we'd have the two permits used up. I don't know, something to look into.
Yeah, well, those are all details we'll think about in the future. Yeah, well, those are all details we'll think about in the future, but keep an eye on that stuff.
I think we're gonna hit ten thousand sooner than expected. Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. I th, I heard, I've heard that too, so. I know it was the same way with the tea or the marijuana stuff too, so.
Yeah, there is a, there is a, I forget what the number is on that.
Is it ten or twelve thousand?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say twelve thousand five hundred on that one.
I think it's twelve five.
Something, something like that. Um, we'll keep an eye on those things, but I mean, either way, um, having a great liquor store that does great business, keeps taxes down. If it's gonna be, if you, if you are, if we are ever going to have competition. The answer's still the same, be big, be the best. I wouldn't change that, that direction anyway, so. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? I really have one substantive oper, operating update. We do need a comp study, twenty twenty-five, to prepare uh, for union negotiations.
A comp study for union negotiations?
Compensation study, so you understand what the market is, so that when you go into those union negotiations, you understand fully what is out there.
Last one we did twenty twenty? Was that?
I think we paid in, I think we kind of tracked, contracted in twenty twenty and completed in twenty-one? Or contracted in nineteen?
I believe it was nineteen and we, yeah, completed in twenty twenty.
We have to do it every five.
However, yeah, not, we didn't do the implementation on, you, non-union was one year, union was the following year, which we would not, not ever do again.
You do it all at once?
Yes.
The, yeah, the, the intent here is, is to make council aware of, definitively aware of what is going on in the market, so that you have an understanding of the. Against other cities, against counties, aga, whatever geographic area you definitively know, right? If you've got, if you've got one in places, I don't like that contract, I can go here and get that, well, you already know if that's legitimate.
When did, when was our last union contract? Was that two years ago?
It'll need to be done in twenty twenty-five, or, I mean, sorry, twenty twenty-six, January one, twenty twenty-six would start a new contract. Our current contract goes through twenty twenty-five.
So I think we should probably start looking at that.
So the comp study and the negotiations would all occur in twenty twenty-five.
And we have to do that.
And how much was that?
To, how, for a third party, right, so you pick, usually you're picking up an audit firm, an accounting firm, ten thousand.
Are we actually, are we actually required to do it?
That's, that's my question.
No, you are not required.
The ten thousand is for, because we have already done, so our compensation side that we did in twenty nineteen was roughly, I was like, was it twenty-eight? Twenty-four thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, but that did our full study plus revamped all of our structure as well as our um, job descriptions. We would not need to do that again, those have been updated, those were very out of date for compliance. We do have pay equity compliance that we have to, to meet. Uh, they don't, do not require you to do a compensation study. But it is something that does help to know that everybody is within alignment.
So to redo or to basically update that, it's ten thousand dollars, that's because it's less work and because there's probably not much that's changed, that's why it's less money.
Well.
Yes, in some ways, not much has changed, in some ways, a lot has changed. For a long, a lot of years there, it was not uncommon for, I mean, at least in my experience, it was not uncommon to have one, two percent increases for a lot of years. There just wasn't any inflation, but um, suddenly there are cities that, you know, three, four, five, six percent is.
That's.
Suddenly a thing that is, like, is actually happening, so.
So that's basically, so we're competitive with hiring.
And retention.
Where are you?
Yes.
We wanna make sure that we retain people.
Don't you just listen to your staff and, I mean, I don't know why you have to pay an outside company to tell you if you're not paying enough? I mean, your staff would start leaving.
It's not that simple. It's, it, you, you listen to your staff, I want more money.
Well, I know that, but is, are your people leaving?
I would never say that.
But are your people leaving? That's what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is that study goes to cities comparable to our size, counties, everything else, and what are they paying out?
Yeah.
So, just for example, Dean's Service, they're offering guys with a lot less experience than I am, that I have. They're offering those people fifty-five dollars an hour, which is very close to union scale, not union scale, but close to it. So if I want, if the company I work for wants to be competitive and wanna hire those people, I have to look at that and say, I'm gonna have to do that. To be competitive to them. You wouldn't know it unless you actually go out and, and know that. I, I wouldn't know what they're paying unless somebody I know was going there to work.
Or you just listen to the market. I mean, the market's gonna tell you, if you can't hire people because you're not paying enough, well, there's the market. You don't need an outside audit company or pay somebody to tell you that, you, we already know.
Well, yeah, but so if you've identified that you're not high enough, you don't necessarily know where to go. What I would say is, the advice I'd give on this is, comp study is good so that council understands where they actually sit. In Granite Falls, I was in a unique position where I was actually on both sides of the negotiating table, which was super awkward to be able to try to pretend that I didn't actually know what the other side had already agreed to, sought to, or whatever. And invariably, every time we went through any negotiation, council members always said, what are the other cities paying? How do we compare? Are we paying too mu, if we agree to this, is that too much compared to the others?
Can we just look that up ourselves?
Well, if we agree to this, are we just doing too little?
We can just look that up ourselves, then I, I mean, I, we have, I don't, when's the last time we had a problem staffing?
We still did that when we did union negotiations, I mean, you still call around to the different cities and you find out what they're paying and. The, the one thing that is a nice feature of doing the, the comp study is that you, you know, you see, okay, well, what does this job actually include? And then they point scale it and so it's, because not every position when you're trying to compare it from city to city is.
Right.
Is uh, apples to apples, right? So, so that, that part of it is useful, but I, I, I tend to agree more with you that why can't we just call around and kind of find out where we're at and then negotiate from there, but.
I mean, when's the last time we didn't get applicants for a position that we had? There's always a lot of them. To me, the market's speaking, the market says we're doing fine, so why pay a company?
It, it was, it, but it wasn't that long ago. When I got here, every three months, a department head left. I mean, it was an absolutely revolving door. That is also how we ended up with uh, Stephanie being the CD director and EDA director. We could not get anyone to take the EDA director position and eventually thought, well, if we can't get anybody. Then I guess this is, the, this is the solution, with these two positions, two positions have now been combined. And, and, and I, my recommendation is, is. Pay appropriately, but recognize the value of retaining quality employees and the institutional knowledge that stays. Because this was the biggest problem I noticed when I got here, Katie and I came in the same month in twenty seventeen and we both thought the same thing. There were small tasks that we were, we were, we were tasked with, that had there been institutional knowledge in the building, should have taken fifteen minutes. And instead, we wasted days, trudging through folders and files that we couldn't. But there was no institutional knowledge because nobody had paid to keep that, that, that talent here. There is a huge difference in efficiencies. Same thing was true in Granite Falls, that we, we, there, Granite Falls, they did a great job retaining staff. Everybody stayed for twenty, thirty, forty years and before I left, we had a giant storm, came through, knocked down power lines and everything. I did not have to call a single department head or a single public works guy, a single water uh, plant uh, employee, I didn't have to call anybody. And when I showed up on Monday, they had already started turning in before and after pictures of the work that they had done, the equipment that they had used, the dates that they had did it, the time that they were there, whether they were working regular hours, whether they were working overtime. All of that stuff and it was because they had all been there long enough, they knew exactly what to do and they did not need instruction. It's a really big deal.
Isn't that why we have step pay though? I mean, everybody that's here for a certain amount of time, they get a raise. I mean, that's.
Correct, but you're competing against everybody that has the same step, the same program.
The only thing that, but, well, I was just gonna say that I think one thing that last time that we did that was. We kind of fall in between being a metro city and a rural, rural city and, and that was, I feel like there was some confusion kind of on that last study.
We chose the non-metro.
We did.
When we were provided with two different options for compensation, I don't know, that was my first comp study that we had gone through. I don't know if I would have pushed back a little bit, not to the council, but to the firm that we had hired of providing two options, I think it was confusing to council. I have, since that time, I've talked to many cities and their compensations and no one has done it like that. I mean, we do have a lot of people who have moved to jobs in the metro and it is, excuse me, income driven. I mean, they are getting tens of thousands of dollars more for a small, just a small, a little more commute. But when the council was provided with two options, two tables, metro, non-metro, they went non-metro. And then the next year, twenty twenty, we implemented it and then everything kind of went a little haywire. Cities were already behind the bar if you didn't do a comp study in twenty-one, twenty-two, because they were competing for great officers. They were providing bonuses for employees.
Yeah, I mean, that was a nightmare trying to do union negotiations in the middle of all that inflation and all that, I mean, that was, that was.
Right.
Yeah, everybody was trying to figure out where are we even at or where should we be and what's the next year gonna look like? I mean, it was.
And as you mentioned, we did do some of our own comparables, but it was because the comp study was already obsolete.
Right.
That is why. Um, and they, as I mentioned before, which we would, I would prefer never to do again, is they weren't lined up correctly. But, and also to add, not to shine a spotlight, because it's not Ms. Hill's time's fault, because it started actually with her predecessor and her position. In three years, we've lost seven employees. Excuse me, so you talk about the turnover and if you wanna continue to remain a lean company, a lean city and not have too many employees. The time it takes her to train in associate planner, a parks coordinator, a position that is a position of one. It takes months and months to train them in and if they leave in six months, eight months, starting that wheel over, it is incredibly time consuming and expensive.
I will say though, those positions, I wa, I would, I would question whether or not, if you, even if you were paying a little bit more. Because a lot of times people, that's, it's, they tend to be younger, it seems like, in those positions and it tends to be more of a stepping stone to the next position for those people. I mean, I'm not saying that maybe paying more wouldn't help, but I, those are stepping stone type positions that I think it's, those are always the same ones.
This city was a stepping stone.
Well, right, every position, yeah, you're right, every, every position was, yeah.
Every position, there was times, I, I talked to one, one of Mike's predecessors that he had here before, that was our finance director. And I asked her why she left and she said, because I don't know who I'm working with tomorrow. And this was many years ago, this is quite a few years ago. And she said, I was not one that was targeted, but I didn't know who my next working co-mate, you know, who's gonna be working here tomorrow.
So we've done comp studies in the past and we still have the same problem. That's, that's.
No, the last one was the first.
The one that we did in twenty nineteen, we hadn't done one for.
But you said it wasn't accurate, you said it wasn't obsolete in a year or two.
It was obsolete because of COVID.
Because of what happened with the economics and inflation.
Yeah, I mean, that, everything from twenty nineteen.
I think we're gonna see a lot more of that too, so it's like.
I don't think we're in that kind of a situation now, but.
I don't, I don't know.
In, either case, the intent there is to, the, the intent is twofold, right? Make sure councils are formed, make sure you understand, right? For example, I can go to City of Richfield, they're hiring me for a finance director, the bottom of their scale is above the top of our scale. Now, I'm not going to Richfield, I'm not driving there, that ain't gonna happen, but it's helpful to understand where those things are, is to give council good information. That's what that is. The other option is, staff calls around. That can generate good information, it's time limited, but the other problem gets to be is sometimes you will have other parties. Maybe people in this room, maybe people in the community who say, oh, so you ask staff to give you the numbers that then you use to negotiate staff's contract? Well, that's very interesting. That is a comment heard before.
Why can't we just do inflationary raises and stick with that?
There's nothing that prevents you from, from offering that, it's a question of whether or not unions accept it, is.
Okay, I just, I just hate to pay somebody to tell us what's going on in our community, that's, and what people should be paid, a, a company that.
Yeah, and we don't need to decide this today, but it's, this is like the, the only significant update I have, but it is definitely something to be thinking about. And we can just as well revisit this on the twentieth, which then reminds me, it's ten o'clock and. I understand council is confirming that we're gonna talk about the budget in August twentieth? That will be the last meeting before setting the levy on September third.
When do we start cutting line items if we're going to? Is that the meeting we do it?
Bring it up on the twentieth. Yep. Anything that you, anything you think you want changed, needs to be changed, wanna discuss, whatever, yep, do it.
What, what Mike, what Mike wants to say is, six months ago?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say Mattson.
No, not six months ago.
Mattson Park, the tennis court resurfaced seventy-two thousand for a re, I, I don't think there's any way we're doing that next year, myself, just looking at, that's, I think that's something that could be dropped off right now or moved back.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, the meeting on the twentieth is gonna be.
Well, that's, so think about this when you're thinking about what you do or do not want to bring up on the twentieth. You never get away from capital, so if we move that, it just moves back.
Right.
What you need to generate in revenue today is not going to change markedly, right? So you're never gonna get away from that. However, if you do want a capital levy to change, you actually have to take it off entirely and say, I'm no longer having a tennis court here at all.
No, I'm not saying that.
I know, but just that recognition, that understanding. Um, operating budget, very corollary, right? I mean, if you cut forty, the only thing you, the primary thought is, is there a reason that forty needs to go back in the next year? And did we just bake in an increase? Those are the, those are kind of the primary thoughts on that.
Do we, do we need to make a motion to continue the meeting past ten?
Well, I think, I think Mike's pretty much wrapped up.
Yeah, that's why I brought up the twentieth, just to clarify that before.
Yeah.
So bring your red pens to twentieth.
Did you need us to decide on a meeting for the twentieth though, or we already got, we've already decided that?
We did, we did in. Yeah, because I think the language for the prior.
I had it on, I had it on the updates.
I think the language from the prior resolution was that I'm just confirming, yeah, clearly and publicly and so I understand what, what I'm supposed to be prepared for.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think that would be my, my guess is that probably everybody is, now that we've kind of gone through the first couple meetings and, you know, we'll probably do basically what we did last year and. You know, you start looking at, at every line and, and uh, you know, the time to make those changes, you know, ideally it was, you know, before this, but I mean, it's, everybody's busy and, you know, that's just how it goes, so. But yeah, we wanna make sure we get those so that we're not coming in on the first meeting of September and trying to figure out what we're doing, yeah, so call Mike, sit down with Mike.
Call me, email me, come in and see me, whatever it is, if you need that, please. All right. Anything else? That's it. Anything from over there on the, the chief seats?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries, we are adjourned. And it carries five zero. Now we're adjourned.